...order today, March 22nd. We've had a call from the audience, from the council, councilman Gavero, Steve. We'll lead off with a meeting with a invocation. We have Pastor Dory to lead us in prayer.
Good evening, everybody. Our Lord Jesus comes to you today to just thank you and advance what we're talking about tonight. I think you that you are releasing wisdom and revelation to our marriage, to our council, all of this, that you will help them make wise decisions and wise choices, Father, for our community as well as for the citizens in our community. We thank you, Lord, that it is your will and not our want. Again, we just want to say thank you for this community and, Lord, that you have its faith and we just want to give you all the glory and the honor. And again, tonight, Father, your will and not our want. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. The county has a minute for a March 8 regular meeting. It'll take a few minutes to review the minutes and then let's just stand a motion for approval. Do you have a motion, something?
Yes, sir. I move that we have a good minute for March 8.
Would you like to ask Steve a second by Gavero to approve what's presented? All of the favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries for zero. On new business, plan a consideration and action to approve or on power lease agreement between the city of Florisville and practical PC. Good business, hot weather communication with East Creek Water Tower site. Lou, okay, sorry, I didn't see you walk in. Did we have a more definite agreement than what we had presented to last week or two weeks ago?
We had essentially the same agreement, but the agreement, as I understand it, is not agreeable. I really don't have anything to tell you further than I pass out the last time I was listening to the council and if you have any comments for me.
Correct, so the same thing?
Yeah, my biggest question is, first of all, the rate, I understand, you're charging the same rate that you have represented certain components on the tower, so that's certainly reasonable. My largest concern is that the rate is a commercial rate, like a commercial tower. And in a commercial tower, I would be provided with some protections on the frequencies. The language that's in that paragraph is actually, what it says is the city will not participate in any arbitration over unlicensed frequencies, which we do use unlicensed frequencies. So it leaves me totally unprotected in tower for any other vendor to come in. And there's numerous situations now throughout town that's reliable for water supply where there's other vendors and they're walking on each other with radio frequency. So it affects every customer that's on the network as well as their own business operations. So if I'm going to pay $450 for a commercial rent on a tower, I would expect the protections to provide it by the fee. That's my biggest own contention. The fee and what I want to do in the tower and the requirements and the terms of requirements is not an issue whatsoever. I just feel like I could have my equipment up there and six months later, one of the competitors may come in here and want to be on the tower, which would be your right to do so. And I would be battling the frequency that I work down and my investment would be lost as well as the investment in the community. We are the only one here that is making a valiant effort to provide free internet and all the hotspots all over the city, but six are off the money right now and two want to board. So that is a concession that we're doing for the community and I tend to feel like that part, if we can't negotiate it out somehow, is unwilling to make that type of risk. It's not the money so much, it's the protection and not being able to run the business and know that it's going to succeed and that customers have been served. So I don't know if that's something that we can...
Well, we can certainly talk about it in council direction, if you can do so, I will. Let me candidly, I wrote those up a decent bit, so I'm not surprised at what you're telling me, okay? Because I represented Oak Hills and I've represented SS for many years. And the reason they say that is because I didn't want those water companies to get into the business of arguing FCC lingo, okay? And the consultant that I've consulted with for SS and for Oak Hills and for this one has basically said to me, Lou, don't let the client get into the middle of refereeing unlicensed bandwidth, okay? And so candidly, I don't want the city, and I'm recommending the city not get in that business, but if there's some way, if there's some little ground, I'm certainly willing to have the council direct me to meet with you and discuss it. I'm not trying to be an obstructionist, all I'm trying to do is keep this business, which is not in the radio...
I understand.
...cellular phone frequency business, out of the business of getting caught in a controversy.
I understand that. My counterproposal to the contract was just to end it with the power. So that in that case, all you're getting is from the other vendor. Are you using any of these frequencies? Well, then if the answer is yes, then you can't run that tower.
If it can be done, correct, to make it correct, if it can be done that simply, I don't have a problem with it. My consultant that I've talked with says it can't be done that simply. I'm certainly willing to get the council to put this off and direct us to meet about it and talk about it and see if there is a way. But he told me rather bluntly, as recently as today, because I anticipated from staff that this discussion would occur, and on the unlicensed, I don't know how to address the unlicensed because they're in fact unlicensed.
Right.
And that's the dilemma, I just don't understand how to deal with them.
Okay.
Okay? But I'm certainly willing to try to be accommodating and to meet you more than halfway if the council directs us. But he told me at the moment, it's a hard nut to crack.
Okay.
Okay? So I would suggest the council table it, you and I have some discussion on it, you have some discussion with the staff on it, I'll try to figure out a way to meet you.
Okay.
Council, any questions, any comments? The staff has recommended that we take this side.
You know, just on hearing our attorney and his views, I think that we ought to stick to what we've agreed to. And I would say that we can listen to your feedback, but again, I don't think that we should get involved in that situation. I think you're rightly, I think we should just follow what the agreement has is. You can speak to Lou and figure out what we can do, but again, you know, we're going to follow that agreement if that's your recommendation. That's my recommendation.
I'm going to assume that's a table to, motion to table, council? Is there a second to that?
I'm second.
The motion by woman second by Gavero to table, item 2A regarding the power lease agreement with the city of Florisville, had a top weather communication, all of the favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries for zero. If, first, you and Lou can talk about this and have, if we're going to come to an agreement that we have a set conflict at our next council meeting or sometime next week. Thank you.
I just have no time to see the contract before our next meeting.
Sure. It's the same project we had at the last meeting that I had up. I ended up...
Well, you moved the aesthetic part of it.
Yes, it could be part of the motion. It's part of the march approved.
And next item is item 2B, consideration and action to approve the Texas municipal maintenance agreement. Andy and I have been meeting over, and I think councilmen, I've met with the Texas over the last few months and actually a couple of years already regarding the maintenance of the median along 181. Andy, have we come to some sort of agreement? Or could you give us a little more history for the benefit of the rest of the council and the people in the audience?
Well, we've got the Texas representative, I'd like for them to step up to introduce themselves. So what we had come up with there is, they've been working with us on our line of our city and surrounding areas. And in return, we would update our municipal maintenance agreement, which is pretty old as it exists today. One of the issues that we had talked about was that we do take over the moment of the median, that it would allow us time for our fiscal cycle to start October 1st, 2012, and we spoke, we had several meetings. And all that I asked was for a cover letter, which you have a copy in your package, stating that to that effect. And we talked about their agreement that they have currently with their contractor, which expires February 1st, 2013. So they added all that, they would keep that going until that point in time would allow us some time to obtain the necessary equipment to start that process. They're here to explain some of that.
Counsel, this law is a question of maintenance. And what I'm asking is the maintenance question here in Florisville. And we try to answer any questions. Basically, roughly two years ago, we met with city council and Louis and Andy and discussed this agreement. And I think the city was asking some questions about other landscaping enhancements that could be done. So the city sent a letter and tagged it up requesting that. Then it takes a while for us to get funding arranged and build some plans for approval to go to work. And now we have that. But I thought that agreement was also going to be on the agenda today, Andy. Was it not?
No, we wanted to do the maintenance agreement first and then take that...
So have they not seen that?
Yes, they've seen the beautification and the location.
Okay. So we've got that project funded and bid and underway, I think it's bid. Bidding soon, bidding soon, underway to build that landscaping enhancements in Berry's Roads, State Highway 97, 181, and Loop 111, 181 of South Town. To address the question that you had two years ago. And so we thought it'd be a good idea to come back now and also address the municipal length agreement and see if we can get that updated to the current state.
The, it's just important to point out that currently, the state of Texas, Texas maintains the medians. Due to budget cuts, due to other factors, Texas is asking the city of Florisville to maintain the medians along 181. In turn, the city of Florisville asks, let's unify some parts of 181 to enhance the visibility for people traveling through Florisville. So that's what we're talking about today, is maintaining the median along 181. Is that pretty much in 181 or...
I understand.
The other, the other register can also, but on the other roads such as downtown, there's not much to take care of because the residential and the businesses next to the road take care of their own frontage.
And we're heading already, you know, out toward the city park.
Right.
Now, this majority of it already, it's just updating the piece on and getting that agreement up to date.
Right.
But the medians should not all the way to the city park. Not all those medians are, are those included? Awesome. Because I know we don't, I know we don't know the rest of that, that probably to 97 of the park. I know that the, you know, the residential people do.
The park is not in the city, correct?
No, but I mean, all the way to the city park, I mean, to the city limit.
Council, McGowan, is willing to...
We do? So all night, so we're doing, we're doing everything within the city limit?
Yes. So then we provide nice roads and trees and we maintain them?
Yes. We will install them and maintain them for a period of at least 18 months, sometimes even a year or two to get them established with irrigation and running and care of urban access. So a period of two years after they're installed, and after that is completed, then we would turn it over to the city.
And it's a, it's a low maintenance.
It is.
It's a low maintenance landscaping process that will not take a lot of maintenance once it's done.
And we work for a force of the city to make sure it's low maintenance.
Any questions, council?
If this, if this is approved by the council, they've attached in their documents a resolution or ordinance with several one of their council fields comfortable with that we can approve tonight, the resolution, our attorney's resolution.
If you're ready, recommend it, Mr. Rosenberg?
Resolution, sir?
Will we appeal with something like that?
Yes. This is a, two years, very correct on the provisions and the aspects of the quick pro quo and the words that they call a maintenance, they do some improvements and that's what they're here tonight to tell you that they're ready to do. Did I represent that right, man?
Yes, sir. Any further discussion, if not, let's have a motion?
I'm asking, would you approve the Texas municipal maintenance agreement and resolution?
In a resolution form.
In a resolution form.
Cross second. Motion by Gavero second by Lou, is to approve the Texas resolution regarding the municipal maintenance agreement, all of the favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries for... Thank you.
Thank you.
Two years of hard work, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next item, a consideration and action to appoint members of the planning and zoning community. I understand we have a couple of vacancies. John, you're on the agenda that you would have...
Yeah, we've had, we've had a couple of vacancies here for a while. And as fast as things growing and all these other departments and so on, we need to have a full committee. I think the last one's tomorrow. There's two individuals that are very interested in him being members of the planning and zoning committee. Philip Vipon is one. He's with the chamber, he's a president of the chamber on that, he's also a business owner. And he has to know the work that is required. So I will make, there's two, I'll make one from a present appointment, Philip Vipon to the planning and zoning committee.
Motion to appoint Philip Vipon for a second?
Cross second.
Second by Lou, is all of the favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Philip Vipon will be the other planning and zoning.
Okay, my second appointee will be Teddy Hardy, she's also a businesswoman, also involved in the chamber of commerce. She's been involved in a lot of activities that the city is also involved in. So I would like to appoint Teddy Hardy to the planning and zoning committee.
Okay, so a second to that, all second. Second by Lou, is all of the favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries for zero. Congratulations to both of you.
Mr. Mayor, you might want to have to say why.
Well, the city council already has spoken. Now, do we have any signatures? All right, just a little more for presentations. A couple of weeks ago, we had met with M&amp;S Engineering, we had a community meeting to discuss some of the needs the floors will have for a master plan and they're here to give some of the results. Keith, what do you need?
Good evening. Thank you all for having us today. My name is Keith Woods, I'm here representing M&amp;S Engineering. Today with me, I have Jared Mott, Daniel Konstansky, Rico Leos, and Christian Leos. M&amp;S Engineering is a full-service engineering and surveying firm located in Spring Branch, which is just north of San Antonio. Currently, M&amp;S has approximately 75 employees, including a shareholder who is from Florisville and that his family still lives here. And we have three employees that currently live in Florisville and are business owners as well. Today, we're here to present the findings, a brief summary of the findings of our master plan. M&amp;S was hired by the city to prepare a 10-year comprehensive master plan for the city. The influx of population and businesses due to the mining activity in the area has dictated the need for this update. Today, we will briefly, we will be briefly covering these seven topics and try and answer three questions for each. Where is the city at? What is coming? And what, what does the city need to do to be ready? Under normal circumstances, the growth of a city's population is a steady climb. Often, for the cities the size of Florisville, the growth is linear, each year's increase in population matching that of the last. Until the last several, several years, this was the pattern for Florisville. Prior to the incredible growth, which has recently become, recently come as a result of the evil ford oil boom. In light of this unprecedented event, M&amp;S tapped not only into the standard sources of information or population predictions, such as the Census Bureau, school records, and other state and local sources. But we also fanned out over the entire country to analyze the pattern of, in other cities and towns, which have been swept up in the oil booms as well. Then M&amp;S supplemented these national trends with on-the-ground surveys of local businesses and residents to draw up a picture of the actual breadth of the oil field's current and future impact on the city's population. Finally, the recent completed UTSA study on the economic impact of the evil ford shale. The result is a set of population projections, which form the basis of the master plan developed by M&amp;S. These projections are comprised of three parts. The existing population, the base population increase, and those are the people who would move to Florisville whether or not the oil boom occurred. The oil population is those that have arrived either directly to work in the fields, supply the fields, or support those who work in the fields. This growth due to the oil boom represents an incredible opportunity for Florisville, but also, as the rest of M&amp;S's findings will show, has created additional responsibilities for the city. This graph illustrates the anticipated growth derived from the population projections developed by M&amp;S. The impact of the oil boom is largely seen in the three-year window, in which the normal pace of growth seems to jump from 6,000 to 8,000 people. It is expected that any developable land will become residential in the south and the west. Commercial will continue to increase north along US 181 and Highway 97. Currently, the city operates out of the regulations laid out in chapter 153 of the city's code of ordinances. M&amp;S proposes that the code be reworked to make it clearer and easier to understand. Another issue is the availability of this information. Florisville will greatly benefit from converting paper to electronic formats that are easily available on a website. A geographical information system, GIS, will improve the decision process by making vast amounts of information available and allowing easy comparison of this information. Though most of the parks are within the corporate boundaries of Florisville, many people outside the city actively use them. Parks were compared by acreage and facilities using the National Recreation and Park Association standards, as well as the standards used by San Antonio River Authority. Local facility standards were set by community input from the 2007 recreational plan. Currently, Florisville could benefit from additional camping facilities, water play areas, softball fields, football fields, baseball fields, running tracks, tennis courts, and basketball courts. Less active facilities that will especially benefit the older population include porch courts, washer courts, and chump floor courts. Based on the MRPA guidelines, as well as guidelines of Florida, Florisville needs more parks. The top two are regional and community parks. Regional parks, which are highest on the list, serve, serve multiple cities and are usually over 200 acres. These large natural areas include activities such as picnicking, boating, fishing, swimming, camping, trail use, golfing, etc. Community parks, which were ranked second, serve areas the size of, serve areas the size of Florisville. They're usually between 30 and 50 acres and focused on meeting community-based recreational needs, as well as preserving unique landscape and open spaces. Park improvements could be made to existing park areas to better utilize space as well. The master plan sought to answer two questions pertaining to the city of Florisville's water system. Is the system in compliance with TCQ minimum capacity requirements? And has the city secured adequate water sources to meet the needs of the increased population projection in this report? M&amp;S staff conducted analysis of the five categories, which TCQ regulates through minimum capacity standards. M&amp;S found that in each of these, the infrastructure currently in place is sufficient to meet and exceed the minimum requirement. Next, M&amp;S obtained actual operating data for the past several years from the city's staff. This data was compiled and analyzed to determine what percentage of the current production capacity is being used. It was found that during peak months, the city currently uses around 51% percent of its permitted supply. Finally, the production, population projections were viewed and a future water demand calculated. The results indicated that in 2012, the end of the timeframe reviewed as part of this master plan, the city can expect to be utilizing about 76% of their permitted supply to meet the peak month demand. As can be seen on the graph, this value is well below the production capacity and is also below the 85% mark, which is when TCQ mandates that plans for acquiring additional sources must be developed. In the course of this analysis, two major deficiencies were found in the city's water portfolio. The first is that the city currently has no means to analyze the existing distribution system. This creates several, several dangers, the most notable of which are the potential to inadvertently lower the quality of service to existing customers and the potential to violate TCQ minimum pressure regulation. And here's a scenario that applies or that makes this, brings it to life. Say a developer wants to build a large hotel, which y'all are getting a lot of that here lately, and hook up to a water line near the edge of the city system. The developer provides a daily volume of water that will be needed, and that number is well within the allowable amount. is well within the allowable amount, or the available amount. However, the pipe which the developer wants to tap into, unknown to the city, is at or near its maximum capacity. And when the hookup occurs, the pressures in that pipeline drop. This could have a twofold impact. First, it lowers the pressure, and therefore, the levels of service to all the neighboring connections. The existing residents are tenants and longtime customers of the city. Secondly, if the impact is great enough, pressures along the line may drop below TCQ minimum pressure requirements, resulting in a violation, potentially state action, state action against the city, and ultimately, money spent by the city to correct the problem, the solution of which should have been paid for by the developer. That scenario also speaks to a second major deficiency, a lack of impact fees. The state of Texas allows municipalities to charge developers and other new customers for the cost of infrastructure to serve their development. These costs are covered by one-time impact fees, which are collected as part of the service agreement between the city and the developer, and cannot be backcharged. Currently, this is a potentially major source of revenue, which the city is not tapping into. In conclusion, the city's water, water system, its staff, and operators are to be commended. The Florisville water system is in compliance with all TCQ minimum capacity requirements. Furthermore, the city has secured an adequate volume of source water to meet its projected needs through 2022. Barring a large influx of unseen growth or a major rule change, the city should have adequate water to supply its needs for the foreseeable future. In the wake of this study, the city should take quick and decisive action to develop tools for analyzing the existing system. The first step in this process should be the development of a hydraulic water model. This computer model will allow the city to analyze the existing system for weak points and pipes that are near maximum capacity, as well as simulating the impact of proposed developments before any contracts are signed. Additionally, the city should develop impact fee rates and regulations for immediate adoption so that they can begin tapping this as a yet untouched revenue source. What this means is that while the city can say with confidence that they have an adequate volume, total volume of water to meet future needs, they cannot say the same confidence that a specific volume of water can be delivered at an acceptable price. Wastewater. The existing wastewater treatment plant was designed and permitted for nine hundred thousand gallons per day. A review of the system before, performed in 2008, identified several deficiencies, most of which have been corrected. The flow to any wastewater plant varies significantly, significantly on a daily and monthly basis due to the fluctuations in water usage and various other factors. At present, the plant is typically operating at about sixty-five percent capacity, with peak months ranging up to seventy-five percent. This means the plant is fully capable of handling the existing needs of the city. In order to provide appropriate time for expansions, TCQ, TCEQ requires planning and budgeting to begin whenever the flow to the plant exceeds seventy-five percent capacity for three consecutive months. This threshold has not been reached, and under normal circumstances, the city would be in a comfortable place to address increasing demand at a leisurely, at a leisurely pace. This graph shows the average monthly flow in blue, and the associated three-month peak flow in orange. It is likely that this, that this summer, the plant will operate at seventy-five percent for a three-month period, triggering the TCEQ requirement to begin planning for expansion. However, due to the expected sudden rise in population resulting from Eagle Ford shale, the typical timeframe these rules anticipate could be reduced. While the actual peak demands, peak demand on the unpredictable factors such as rainfall amounts, there is a potential for the plant to be operating at full capacity as early The design permitting and construction of a major water wastewater treat, wastewater expansion is a lengthy process. There are many options available for types of upgrades to consider, equipment to select, permitting, and more. At the start, several, several key decisions regarding budget and plant flexibility need to be made, which will greatly affect the direction of the design. Once submitted to TCQ, the permit generally takes eight to sixteen months or more. The time from submission of the permit application until approval is highly variable due to public comment period, the requirement to publish notices, and more. Once the approval is obtained, project construction can be expected to take approximately eight to ten months. Overall, the process will take at least a year and a half, possibly significantly longer. As the existing plant can reach capacity in little as two years, it is therefore imperative that the city begin planning for how to expand the document, and give the early decision-making process a higher priority so that the permit can be submitted as early as possible. Roads. In nineteen ninety-nine, the nineteen ninety-nine study has served as the city's guide in prioritizing road projects over the last decade. Due to the success and usefulness of that report, MNS sought to provide a new guideline, or a new guide utilizing the same criteria and evaluation methods which have served the city so well. Accordingly, the analysis conducted was modeled after the nineteen ninety-nine success. The evaluation criteria rank the roads in the six different categories. Together, these categories make it, make a road safe, functional, and aesthetically pleasing. Obviously, the aesthetics of the road take second priority to allowing for children of Florisville to safely ride bikes in their neighborhood. Accordingly, the different criteria are weighted in order of importance. This is just a short list of the roads, the, the top ranking roads. The different roads were evaluated based on the characteristics described previously and given scores. The poorer the road performed in a given area, the higher the score. The scores and weighting were combined to give a final ranking of the roads. This provides the city a tool to know which roads to look into working on first, and serves as an update to the project list developed in that nineteen ninety-nine report. And then finally, the summary of our recommendations in, in this master plan. The immediate actions, begin wastewater plant design and permitting, develop comprehensive water distribution model, repair streets with a high priority, concrete sewer line replacement, create or update impact fees for water wastewater and streets. And then future actions in a one-to-three-year window, begin construction of a wastewater plant, repair medium priority streets, clarify zoning procedures and regulations, rewrite city regulations, standards pertaining to development, drainage, streets, water, et cetera, and convert to online information sharing, or DIF. And then our long-range recommendations, three to five years, continue to repair the streets and improve drainage, and expand wastewater lift station as needed for future And that is a brief summary of the master plan developed by MNS Engineering. There's a lot to the report. This is, again, just a brief summary, and it's time that the other few guys can give to you. So at this time, I'll open it up, questions, I don't know if you guys want to get in depth on the questions, or however you want to do it.
Kathy, before we start the questions, Mayor, I just wanted to add a couple things to the MNS's work for the city. The staff has been working on the other end of this master plan. We're currently conducting a water rate study, which was a grant we received by USDA. We're going to present it to the council next month on Friday. Think RP should be, make a recommendation to the council, and then let the council approve it, and that's what they want to do. If we do approve those rates as recommended by the USDA, then there can be a funding source for the wastewater treatment plant expansion at a low interest loan. We also are working with a grant writer for our next funding cycle through the Department of Rural Affairs, I believe it is. We went to a meeting at ACOG and presented the issues that we have with the city right now, and the way it's grown, because of the Eagle Ford shale. Also, our street maintenance tax, we continue to have, and that's a funding source for continuing improvements on the road.
Do you have any questions?
I was going to go, question in your discussion.
So we had the streets from one to ten, that's the ordering, maybe the parent from one to ten? Correct, correct. Yeah, based on the six different factors, and then we put a, a weight associated to those factors. Obviously, functionality is, is the biggest priority, you know, your street fall apart, and then the, the curves and the pavement width, and, and, and also the, the amount of traffic that's on that road. We're all factors and weighted, and then we just, we, we drove every one of the roads identified by the city to be put in this list, and, and put it, and it spit out the information and put it in order. But then that would change the map that you, that we have already, that we've had. It's, it's based on that map. That, that's how we got the roads to start with and look with, look at. There's a couple along our way, and we looked, we saw them, so well, let's throw this one in, but that was the basis for, for the road.
In addition, just sort of a couple of recommendations, that the study that they, that Donna doesn't include the roads we're working on, that is, that we're completing The parks, I think, is covered by water, wastewater, streets, and the parks. I attended a meeting with Jesse Pettis, with the committee that he's on, talking about parks in San Antonio to go there, and how important that is also. We can't forget that, because the visitors that we have, they're going to be permanent residents or temporary residents for several years to come, are looking at activities that they can do locally. The mom or the dad are out working in the oil and gas industry, and the other parent has to take care of the kids and have an area to go. So that's one of the things that they've made sure that we emphasize, that that's an important part of our infrastructure.
And we do go into some depth in our, in our study, but one of the things in our brief summary, we didn't cover.
Talk us about the impact fees.
Well, it's, it's my understanding that it's currently being worked on. Basically, our recommendation was that obviously we need, you guys need impact fees, but they are currently underway and, and being studied by some.
It's a USDA grant I received, and it was out of his last hand, like, in his first hand, and we did need, within extensively, and he's talked about thoroughly, should be, but he will do a presentation, a formal presentation to the council of the numbers and figures that he would recommend.
And that's why we didn't go into a lot of depth on that, because it was being studied already, so we focused our efforts on, on other parts of it.
Any other questions, the public council?
I know that we've been working on getting some other towers, water towers put into place. I know we're looking at getting one by the Eagle still, or we'd be at, maybe getting this extra, and then an extra water tower. But, you know, I know that in the FEBC plan to create parks, create parks, I know that we're looking at putting a lift station and some other resources out on 97, with that panel. But that's two major water sources that are, that are out there. But what other fees besides impact fees might we use?
There's, you have grants that, that you can apply for through the Texas Water Development Board. There's, there are routes, you know, no interest loans, things like that, that we tell other water providers obtain, and that would be another avenue. But talking about the towers, I think, you know, it, that, that goes back, and again, sounds kind of like a salesman, but I'm, I'm selling it because we've done it for other communities, other, other water providers, and just seen the benefit of a water mall. And water models talking about a tower, putting a tower in, I mean, you know, is it going to help here, is it going to help here? With a water, water mall, you'll know exactly the impact. You may be over-designing something that didn't, that was more than you needed, or if you would have put it in a different location, it may have had a different effect, so.
Mayor, the, the objective today is for MNS to do a, a quick presentation. You do have a whole package in your council package, and we take some time to review it, grow it, and everything that they put together. This can be approved at a later date and put on our website, so other investors that want to come into our city can see what we're doing, and what we need to do. In addition, after we get the, the water rate study presented to the council, and that has been approved, I will update a capital improvement program in addition to the work that they've done, so we can know where we need to add, how much it's going to cost us, and where our funding sources will be.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank God.
Good one, to our Floriol City Cemetery, Mr. Russell.
Oh, much, very much. Hope to have a pleasure to put my junk. Thank you. Tell you what, the Sheriff of Commerce must, I give a beef for a limp, you know, to eat about two or three pounds, that's, that's, that's me. And I went to the, thank you, and I went to the first circus I've been to in fifty years, so, it's been a good week. I was glad, I, the cemetery is better right now than any time I remember. It's, the morgue is, is pretty much completely done, and I, I, you know, I really don't have a whole lot to fussy that anymore. Lopez, I was by his place, uh, today, and he has his contract to, to take care of the ants and redheads, that type of stuff. I saw the gentleman that's in charge of the parks, and he's really obsessed with the gophers, that, that California's will build, so, whatever. I mean, that would really help the budget, so, he's really a worker, you know, he's all, I tell you, he's a. But, but really, I, I'm just, I'm very happy about the usual. Mr. Steel, Mr. Steel was nice enough to give me a few minutes at MNS Church, and, you know, I've never been treated any better. I mean, it's not very often on the interview, you should, they give you an ovation, and you go up there, you go up there, they give you an ovation, or you're leaving. But I, I, Mr. Mayor. But I, Mr. Mayor, I was a little disappointed because your mother came up to me after the visit and she said, you know what, Danny should be here. And said, if I could have known you were coming, I would have had Danny here. True story. I did, I did, I had marked one cemetery wrong on the, where we have the four flags like that up there, so I'm going to give you a corrected dig up here. We're going to have four, I flagged it, four cemeteries that size up there, three of them. And, you know, they'll be blown on special occasions. They're not, the changes from this cemetery to the after garden out there from the old one eighty-one. I've never had a John Ollie jar so much of a feeling. The other, other thing is I've talked around quite a bit about the oaks, especially the oak trees inside the cemetery. So I took the liberty of getting a bid. I saw a ad in the Washington County News, the tree company that was, that was willing to have a book at the garden show. So I called a gentleman and, you know, if it was my wife, what she would do is tell you how much, I'm saying you owe her three thousand bucks. I mean, that's the good news. And, but the bids were nine thousand. I want, but there's, there's several in Florida, you know, that do trees. But it needs somebody properly certified because of the, on those oaks, especially the moss and, and nothing's been done for years. I know in Austin, of course, we had oak wilt and, you know, I don't, I don't think it's too close to here, but it could come. But, oh yeah. Then I'll give you copies of this. The public library gave us a report. What did they want to do? Go that way. Well, I forgot to tell you, Mr. Steel, I go up, say that US stars failed America. Very good. All good for today. I'll be the comedian. Somewhere. July, our plan, the group has to make their celebration memorial day at the city cemetery. And boy, that time will be on us, so if you would give this serious consideration on tree, I think, border. Now, this does not include tree murals. And so give this serious consideration and if you have any questions, the gentleman's, you know, his name is on here, yeah, he is up here. But you may want to ask questions. Nine thousand dollars is quite a bit of money, but it's within our budget, which was eleven twenty. So I think priorities are all the trees, the ripage of the streets in there. We've got, we've got the water, the water pressure now is fixed, so that's very good. And so it won't be nice to finish raining. So those are the real top priorities. And I would like to say, you know, when I made my presentation, I think the cemeteries like the one out on Old Lane and one, stuff like that, we ought to get a decent fence. I know I've got the call on the, on that one, part about them and the lady said that the horse is racing out there. It's sure not, well, what out there will, but and the fence is down on one side. And so I think it's important that we try to look at that and clarify again, first priority is the city cemetery. Also, I, I called, I know I did add in the Washington County News next week, think about a lot of old dead oaks and the seed trees. It'll make real good barbecue wood or firewood. And so that side that they feel, you know, the, they're free, but you have to clear up the junk trees too. And I mean, I do use dead tree murals and dead ash trees, stuff like that. So we'll see what happens on that and I'll work through you after we make, it's maybe late. It's the twelfth, twelfth of March, month, this is. Let's see, I think that's about here.
Mr. Russell, did you say you have other bids on the tree surface? Do you have other bids on the tree surface or this the only one?
No, I didn't have that.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, I would say we look, that's not an absolute must, buy the mortuary, but it's very important. The lady at the library, librarian, made a presentation at our, at our meeting, last meeting of our association and she was actually getting on to put it on a computer over there. Individual people are in the cemetery, somebody gives her a picture of individual cemetery. She knows how to go through the procedure and that type of thing. And so that did us very interesting on that, so. The other thing, there's a, there's a mower that's perfect. I used to sell them, I had a picture somewhere, but, you know, but it costs three hundred dollars, tracks a fly. Now, I've got anonymous, nothing to just give you a hundred dollar bill. And I've got Charlie Franklin, it'll be a check. No, he, he didn't do it. But if I could get, if I could get a hundred dollar check for a man with a beard or, I can just say in the Washington County News, one attorney, one, who is a brother, one fuel director and probably the other one. Well, I have my three hundred dollars.
I think I can write her a check for you.
I can go pick up the mower Saturday. Uh-oh. That's all right.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. All right, you have a, a report from our police department regarding racial profiling lieutenant.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Andy, I'm not as animated as Mr. Russell. I'm getting along my age, but I'm doing the best I can, bear with me. My purpose here today is to present to you our yearly racial profiling information. The state of Texas requires that we report to you the previous years of data that we collected. We're required to collect all data from all traffic stops and contacts that we made during the previous year. We break those down by number of stops, number of searches, whether those searches were consensual or probable cause searches, and then we break it down by race and ethnicity. That's a requirement by the state. We not only report to our governing body, which is you all, we report to T-CLOPS, which is basically the governing body for law enforcement in the state of Texas. You should have an impact for this council meeting, racial profiling analysis, the individual numbers on there and take a look at it and you can see what we did. Total contacts from last year, twenty-five hundred and fourteen, those are traffic stops or other stops, most of them will be traffic stops. How many searches we did, a hundred and ten, eighty percent were consensual, hundred percent were out of cause. And out of those stops, twenty-seven arrests were made. We've got it broken down below that by race and ethnicity. And there's a little bit of information on the second page. Something you should know, we are what's considered a tier one reporting agency because we have dashboard cameras in all of our vehicles. We only have to provide this much information to you and to the state. If we did not have cameras, we would have to provide a lot more information, we'd have to do a lot more work. So I just wanted to add, not only are the dashboard cameras important for the safety of officers and the safety of citizens and everyone we contact, it also helps us with our racial profile report. Very, very useful. We appreciate having them in, appreciate having them in. Any questions about this very dry subject? I want to say that she came back. The person that's been taking care of this from the second year, I believe, that we've been doing this, we've had to do it for, I believe, seven or eight years, the state mandated that we had to do this, the legislature. Sergeant Derry Fowler is the person that compiles all this information. She's the one that puts it together. She has to. And she wanted to say something, but she's got laryngitis, so she's going to her friend.
I tell you what, she's my friend forever because she gave me a warning ticket.
It's on that, it's on the contact log, so we're good.
But as I said, we fulfilled the requirements of the year. I should say that we, we see no anything, we don't see anything that we need to pay too much attention to. Everything looks to be in line. I don't see any evidence of racial profiling within the official police department or with any of our officers in the state ever, so they're doing a good job and I don't appreciate any problems with that in future either. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Okay, the next few items, managing report.
Mr. Russell, we got no money here.
All right. Two brothers and a peddle record.
Okay, Mayor and Council, tonight's management report encompasses items A through J. Some topics will be quick breaks on ongoing activity and others will be request to report on personnel issues. Your continued support and guidance is greatly appreciated. Sorry, the four A operation is the event center and the four, four A operation property. I visited with Ms. Carolyn Malasus, who's the interim Parks and Recreation Director. I got a schedule of the events that have been held at the event center from October one till March twentieth. Other than weddings and quinceañeras, they've had a national night out, peanut festival concert, law enforcement training, Baptist training, classic car show, ACOG meeting, will call services, local, I believe, Opry Night, which has been a success and has been in the paper and they're continuing, they're going to have several more. False ass cook-off, Texas gun shows, Brown hearing, screening, the expressives, job fair, which generated about fourteen hundred people to our center, the Marathon Oil meeting, the comedy Christmas party, will call services again, our holiday extravaganza, which, how many people do you think were there, Mayor?
Eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred people, good. Relay for life kickoff, marathon meeting, Opry Night again, Brown server screening, will call services, sacred harp, wine and art, men's basketball tournament, plateau land and wildlife management, chamber banquet, which was awesome and I think I had too much fun there. Express needs job fair, will call services again, home and garden show where's Miss Diane, which was a success, thank you very much. Marathon has held several meetings and that's a whole company that's, is real big in this area. And then we even had, like Mr. Russell said, and he attended the Kelly Miller Circus, which was awesome. I took my family and it was an outstanding thing to have. We have a lot of activity at the center, which is good. What we implemented is facilities usage evaluation form, so we can get some feedback from people that rent our, our facility. We've got several and I'll just read a little bit. The fiftieth wedding anniversary, very impressed with the setup. Charles Ropes team building, which is a service that Marathon Oil does, all equipment was clean and orderly, everything worked well, clean and organized, setup was exactly as we agreed to. And then very pleased and enjoyed the facility and people, which is something that's true because it's a reoccurring use by these people, these organizations. City Man of South Texas, if anybody attended that, that was an awesome, awesome deal. The, we had a member of the City Man's group make a statement out there, which I think that the council should be very proud of. He came from another city, which is close to us and stated that he wanted his city council to come see that building so he could know, so they could know that Florida City Council is doing something right. And I don't, I, I know the council well enough that you don't want the credit, you want the citizens who supported that to get that credit. So that was an awesome statement that was made public and it gives us encouragement to know that, that the foresight, that the mayor, the council and everybody involved, the four A board was excellent and very, very much appreciated. Other than that, Ms. Carolyn, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Just that our center is extremely busy and I'm very proud to be, to have been a part of seeing the center rebuilt from the ground up and being a part of seeing it come to fruition and being as busy as it is has been exciting. The challenges we faced with the community and with the political climate have definitely, I think, instilled a passion in me that, you know, I have to see this building succeed. And as Andy mentioned, we have a wide array of units and we're busy, we're really busy. And I encourage all of you to come out and share this experience with us. I think that we're, it's a good thing, we're moving forward. We've got still some work to do, but I think it's, it's awesome and I'm very proud to be a part of, of seeing this center grow.
Thank you, Carolyn. Andy or Carolyn, have we talked about any improvements? Now that we know it's built and what type of events are coming into our facility, have we considered other improvements that need to be addressed in the near future?
Ms. Carolyn had talked about what needed to come with our event center to make it even more market.
There, there are several things that have been addressed and this has come from usage comments and different things, the walls in the ballroom, the dividers would help to be able to rent out the individual space and larger conferences that come in and need the breakout sessions and everything, that would definitely help. Our parking lot definitely needs to be updated and that's something that we want to look at. Some of the setup of the offices on some of the ends, we determined that entrances and usage may, you know, changing doors from one side to another will open up the ability to be able to market certain areas of the center. Our sound system, we have a basic TA system. We do have a snake that runs, they call it a snake, runs through our, our ceiling that, and this basically is used when we have entities that come in that require a large amount of power to perform, instead of them running cords along the floor to the stage from the back wall where people can trip and fall and it's already happened where they needed this power to run the cords and, and people have, you know, complained, running the extra power. and people have, you know, complained, running the extra power in the conduit in the ceiling to avoid that and to address that situation is something that we've not priced it on and looked at, and would prove to be beneficial to some of the people. The safety issue.
And her interim position as Parks and Recreation Director, she's taken over all the parks throughout the city, so she's learning a lot. And I had all the employees on an interim basis giving a report of where they were today. They turned in that this week. If you want to get a copy of that or want to review it, I'm going to share it for you. But she has been dealing with the Little League, the Wildcats, and the issues that they're having, and will continue to have till we address that, so that's our problem. We need to add more parks to them, and let's talk about more ballfields, more football fields, more, more everything, and that's just a given. I'm a one, Mayor, if that's okay.
Carolyn, what are some of the upcoming events that are coming? M.A.N. Rees will come in up soon?
Oh, we're booked every weekend. We've got a lot of social events, and then we have the proms from all the, well, we have Pope, La Verne, Forestville Proms. We have, we've got events that are going to be recurring events, that are going to be there every year, like Home and Garden, we've got the Bobby Flotis birthday bash, the Con Slatter fundraiser, the Trail Rider Association fundraiser, the Fire Department Wild Game Dinner. I think I probably have maybe five Saturdays open for two thousand and twelve. And, you know, so, and during, you know, the weekends are falling into place, and we've got people coming in. The weekdays was our challenge, but even now, it was literally a circus out there this week, because I was full every single day with trainings, meetings, you know, the word's getting out, and people are just, that's the best form of advertisement, because we're killing during the weekdays.
Ms. Sherry, what other events are you going to be holding up there or heading?
We're going to be doing the Summer Country Music Series out there again, which is one Sunday out of the month. We'll be holding that out on the patio, it won't be in company seat of ballroom, but it'll be all the outside area. We're also going to be holding the eighth annual False Fest barbecue, cook-off, kind of scene cook-off, we did a good job last year, we had twenty-three teams show up. All of those teams have almost committed their duty to come back, and they're bringing people with their social media later, and that'll be a good event to keep that going as well.
And Ms. Margaret, what are you going to be helping with at the center?
We have the Holiday Extravaganza.
All right. Thank you.
Do you have questions or comments?
Thank you, Carolyn.
All right, I'll move on. Mayor, four-eight operation, FBBC activities, where's Mr. Brad Perry, he's going to pinch me if I don't say something right, so. The FBBC is working with nine companies to purchase property at the Rancho Grande Business Park, Mrs. Diane, to bring their operations to Florida. These companies provide different services, material and equipment to the Eagle Ford Shell Oil and Gas drilling. We expect anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and twenty jobs created within the next year. As the companies develop, they expect to hire more personnel. These jobs will range from administrative clerks, inventory supply clerks, managers, truck drivers, material handlers, laborers, and welders. We're coordinating with the Almond Workforce Office to set up a conference with all the companies, provide support for the recruiting efforts, and to inform them what incentives the state of Texas offers for creating the jobs. This is Colonel Perez, this is my, my reading, so. Work is underway to bring all water and electric lines to the property. Requests have been submitted to Tech dot for permits, they have to cross the county road or the state road for permits to do this work. The FBBC sold one point five acres at the Veterans Park next to the dance studio to a private developer to construct a building to lease to the state of Texas for the Health and Human Services Office in Florida, which is currently on one eighty-one. They sold five acre tract to Ben Ray, owner of the Creekside RV Park for parking of equipment, Mr. Gomez, Councilman Gomez, that is currently in the front of the parking facing one eighty-one, and for use as a recreation area for the RV residence. Only one acre of the five acres is out of a flood planing. Mr. Reflan has developed office for his building on this acre to support the RV park. Approved the sale of two acres to CD Deconstruction, a local company to build cottages. Cottages are considered the same as a motel, and the city can collect motel tax from the guests. Working with private developers to bring new tenants to the old Walmart building, continuing to develop the remainder of the huge property, which is where the Walmart is located, and they brought us a plan, I seen it with my own eyes, awesome, awesome layout. Of course, in any kind of real estate transaction, any kind of big franchise business, they don't want to reveal anything till the paper is signed, the documents are signed, so I'll just enjoy that myself till I can bring that or the FBBC can bring that to you. Between the hospital and Super Walmart. Also planning for the future development of the Huiden property, which is right across one eighty-one across the Walmart. That's another thing that is a done deal, we're working out the infrastructure issue with it. This was until bringing tour lines to that side of the US one eighty-one. We've met with engineers, because that's going to take some engineering work, and also that would have to be a voluntary annexation, because it is out of the city at this point in time. Working with private developers on the Holiday Express Inn, you haven't heard, that's a done deal also, between the reconnaissance and the executive suites inn within the city, which is another location by the other hotel. Other inquiries have been received, or possibly two, and we'll continue work with the downtown renovation, they don't want to forget our downtown area, and currently working on how to incorporate the drainage in front of the buildings, the cottages that are located, one of our business owners built, is bringing more water into the downtown area, so we're working on getting that moved out of the way, so the folks in the downtown area won't have to set in a flow of water in it while we're working, so.
Mr. Brad, is there anything else that you'd like to?
All right, just a question on that, I think I brought your attention, Mr. Johnson and to Mr. Perez, on that industrial park.
Yes, sir.
I was pulling in with this man, I guess you had a meeting where there's two individuals that wanted to buy some land over there.
Yes, sir.
And one of the guys was ready to have the money to buy the park, the property, and then Mr. Perez had told me that he couldn't sell to him, because both of these guys had come together, and if they wanted to buy the property, why are we not selling that property or moving the water there?
I think it has become an issue of a partnership that had dissolved, and they wanted to figure out how are we going to justify which one, and like you said, one has money to offer at that point in time. My understanding is that this is, that is compared with his attorneys, Mr. Dominic Carvajal, and he gave them the legal advice to move forward on...
I don't think that the money is a problem there, both of them are capable of buying. They came to us as a company, both of them actually working together. Since then, they've had an outing between the both of them, and the advice to us has been, don't get involved in the discussions or the disagreements. When they can get together or separately, they come to us with an offer that doesn't have any problem attached to it, we don't have any problem.
According, if somebody's trying to make a business here, I mean, you all job as a board and Mr. Perez as a president...
It's not clear, Mr. Valores.
No, I understand, I understand, but this has been happening for a while. This man called me, one of the contractors, says, I'm ready to build. We have the money, what is the holdup? I understand what you're saying, but also, what are we doing, whether, who has the money? If both of them have the money, and Mr. Perez said, I don't want to go into the discussion about the highest bidder, but to me, I might be wrong, that's my opinion, I might be wrong to go with the highest bidder, they can build whatever they want to build, who will be making money for the city? But right now, we're on hold, because, you know, I tried to get an answer from Mr. Johnson, I tried to get an answer from Mr. Perez, and it's been a couple of weeks where Mr. Dominic was going to give us, and I understand what you're saying, we need to go through that, but I mean, what are we going to do, or what are y'all going to do as a board, to try to get this sold, so that company can come in and start building and start making some tax dollars or whatever it takes?
We can clarify who the company is that's going to buy the land, we'll be glad to deal with them or anybody else that wants the land, but at this point...
But you, but you have two individuals that want to buy it. What are we doing to, 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 you know, settle this dispute?
It's not up to us to settle the dispute.
Sure it is, sure it is now.
No, we're just saying we sat on the land.
These two individuals, were they representing one company?
They were actually one company.
Okay, so they split up?
They split up, but they haven't finalized among themselves, you know, what they're going to do.
Okay.
So right now, it's a matter of us injecting ourselves in the conflict between them.
Okay, you're two individuals, but my understanding is Jesse was dealing with one of those as a higher level?
No, I wouldn't say that.
Well, I mean, that's where I...
I think one is more capable than the other, you know, as far as knowledge, it's concerned about what they're actually wanting to do there. But, you know, we're not going to decide on the basis of that. I think both of them are capable of doing the job, and they have the money to do it well.
But I think as a city and as a group of individuals, we should try to negotiate that as quick as possible as we can, so we can go ahead and get that company that wants to build. You know, this man said, I'm ready to build, I have the money.
Well, what are we doing? You're giving us under advice.
Well, I don't think I'm under advice.
But those type of issues, they really should be resolved at the...
Yes, I mean, we...
No, I understand, but I'm asking Mr. Perez, and Mr. Perez, like I said, Mr. Perez, we can have his deal, and I was hoping he was here tonight, you know, with Mr. C., he cut stuff on his own over there where he shouldn't have cut. He went over there and did a permit over here in front of his apartment. He does what he wants, how he wants, and when he's supposed to be doing his job, he's not doing his job. And, you know, I'm not, I'm not here asking him to, I'm not trying to raise, but if we have an opportunity to have a business to come in, why aren't we delaying it? But we'll leave it, but I'll leave it as a discussion. I was going to put on the agenda, but since it was on here as a four-eight report, I figured I'd put it in there, but I'll get my facts together, I'll get the person that wants this built, and put it all together, but I lose just a question there. I know that the FBBC can do something to go forward with this situation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valores.
I'll move on to the Parks Foundation, which is a foundation that we established some time ago, and currently there is no activity. We'll be working with the interim Parks and Recreation Director, that she stepped in with another job for you, to recruit interested individuals that can work alongside her utilizing the draft master plan. When the list of individuals, excuse me, is some, how, containing completed applications, we'll make a recommendation to the council. We have a very good member that's sitting in the audience also, we just have to get him back going. It was an issue of changes on the board several times, that's where we are, but we really have to get him that, something that Carolyn and I will work on because of master plan and everything else.
Will you, Carolyn, recruit some board members that the council can roll on, possibly?
Yes, we will get them to fill out an application, we can try to, I know she's been working with some of the leagues already to let them know what this is what we need. We are going to utilize the one dollar Parks fee, so it's intended and best use, it stays on there, the Parks Foundation has to be involved, so that's the only way we'll move on on that.
Okay, go ahead.
Planning and donating commission, with the addition of the two members, the commission is fully staffed. Last week, last meeting was not held due to a lack of a warrant. This was due to a medical emergency and does not happen often. In addition, all required notices were mailed out for the potential RV parks, and a meeting notice will be posted as required, and I'll follow back up there on the Parks fees assembled for it. Update on activities related to the annexation of the Recreation Court Ordinance extension to Las Gavas Highway, like I said, on West Inter, which is something the council approved the last time. The survey was completed up to the River Park by Burt and Partners, which was the firm selected to do the surveying. I will meet with Larry Hymer next week, I talked to him over the phone this week, to determine the work that would be required for the added extension to that point. I will report any further development after said meeting, so we're moving forward on the annexation. He's done all the surveying up to the River Park, and we just need to find out what it's going to take for that other port, and I'll bring that back up to the council. F, updated report on RV parks, permits, and invoices for twenty-twelve fees. Cindy Nichols was on vacation, her mama was in from Oklahoma, so she was enjoying a week off, but she did provide me with this. RV parks, San RV Park owner, the packet of levels of modification, annual notice, RV park application, a copy of the RV park ordinance packet for San Antonio US now on March fifteenth, twenty-twelve. Annual fee, annual licensing fees are due on March thirtieth, twenty-twelve. I had Ben Ray come in and say I need to pay, Cindy's not here, hold on to your money 'til she gets back. Current application submitted and waiting for approval from PMG Committee on March twenty-eighth, which is their next scheduled meeting, I believe, where she's going to host for that day, for RV parks and mobile home parks. Nineteen fifty-six Southern Spring Grove, by terms of lane, a hundred plus pad sites. Twenty-two twenty-tenth Street, next to Haddon Oaks Apartments, a hundred plus pad size. Thirteen forty-five Southern Spring Grove, between Business Loop one eighty-one and Highway one eighty-one, twelve pad size. Seven oh three and a half fourth street, Eagle Raker Size, twenty plus size. Total number of future RV pad sites approximately two hundred and thirty-two. Projected revenue from the fees that she sent out, the notices, is five thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. The projected revenue if these other parks are approved is twelve thousand eight hundred. RV trade mark fees are collected annually, and this is something that we've worked on with the PMG. The annual licensing fee, just through your information, thirty-five dollars per space for recreational equal parks with fifteen or less total spaces, forty-five dollars per space for recreational equal parks with sixteen to thirty total spaces, and fifty-five dollars per space for recreational equal parks with more than thirty spaces. And we are collecting a fee, it's a minimal fee, but other cities aren't collecting anything, and I believe that's the best that we could do at this point in time. I know the two new members of the PMG came in because they heard of all the activity, and they want to have a say, so they want to represent the people on RVs. We understand RV parks within a business, commercial zone area, that will have to get a special use permit, that we get into the residential, and that's one that we've got to be careful with, so. Human Resource Budgeted Physician Salary Survey Organizational Chart, and that's I and G. My request to the council, I pulled up my little contract here, my exhibit, the goals and objectives, and for the second quarter, it says appropriately compensate for merit raises and salary range adjustments, if job performance expectations are matched, if an employee is below the minimum salary range, make adjustments to bring employee up to the minimum of jobs range by the end of the second quarter, which is the end of this one. Monitor merit raises due to the first and second quarter to make sure they are in compliance with the salary range, should salaries maximum range, provide opportunity for employees to excel in other areas, that will provide opportunity for job growth, or remain capped until salary range, changes in employee salaries are valid, depending on job performance. I know Mr. Valores came in, and I know employees, I encourage them to stay within their chain of command, but I do not stop them from talking to council members when they have a concern. One of their concerns is, I know they brought it up to the Human Resource Department, Ms. Margaret and Ms. Sherry, because they, the council had said at, by the time that we were going to be able to possibly get another increase if we were lower paid, and we've got a couple of those, she's got a report that she can present to you on that. We had budgeted, and the current budget, I can get back to that real quick. Four, one-street department, equipment operator, one wastewater treatment operator, and one part-time municipal work clerk, opposition pending to build, that the council has directed. We are at the six month. We've got one gentleman out, unfortunately, on our street department. He has an illness that's pretty serious, so he's out, but they're still working the streets and with four, are the only members to include the department head, so it's a request that I be allowed to move. I'm hiring somebody, he's been looking, he's been asking. One wastewater treatment operator, we've got a lot of activity at our wastewater treatment plant, we could move on that one, and the one part-time municipal clerk, the judge has come in several times and asked me, Andy, we've got increased activity because of the police department they left, because of the traffic, we're generating more, I need some more help in that area, so I have to take it up to the council. According to this, it doesn't require council approval as part of my contract, but I would not do it unless I would notify you on that. On the lower end, employees' salary, that's something that I've met with several on that issue too, because Andy's in life, I'm in that category, I know I am, and Ms. Sherry, could you just give them a quick brief on free work? That way we can brief the council and get their approval.
I've done the original study where I've gone out for other cities that are similar to five thousand, ten thousand, mid-population, for the same type of jobs, duties, and responsibilities, and there... And there were a few of ours that did fall below that average. We're looking at doing that, I was working with Andy on budget numbers, beginning of our first half of the year, when we begin of May, uh, March, I'm sorry. Our last payroll check that we'd be coming out of there, we have a big number on what we spent this year, we are under. Including the, on top of the employees that we have not hired yet, their salaries up until this point, and then they're under a little bit. We definitely have something to move on that, and I think that we should at this point. We've gone through Happy Meal, and they definitely deserve to be bumped up where they belong. And the city's organization, but as well as the people that are in the same types of situations in the same size cities that we have.
How many employees are there? I mean, you're talking about, how many employees are underpaid? Is that what Carolyn said?
Yes, what we have. According to the average per city's...
Right, right, we have about nine employees. It's not a great number, and it's not a great amount of money that they're, that they're showing up to be under. It's a very minimal amount on the overall schedule of the budget. It would not require that we make a budget adjustment to the numbers that we have in the budget from the beginning of the year. Like I said, we had excess money left over from the positions that we hadn't hired yet for this point. And even with that, we still would not have to do an adjustment at this point to the budget to be able to give them those raises, as well as hire the people that we have to stay within our budget.
If you set a precedent for this, you know that the rest of the employees are gonna want the same.
But our justification is...
I understand your justification, but sometimes justification doesn't matter, you know? We can justify whatever we want, we tried and... But they've decided, I would like to see the information.
The answer is?
I do, I do, I've got them already down, I've got them broken down by the employee type within the water sewer department, street department, and then I actually have them broken down in their separate categories, depending on where their time range is and what their job duties are, supervisor versus regular laborers, if you have your second in command. I've got a whole binder pool, I've got sheets printed out, highlighted where our employees are compared to the other employees. The tenure that they've been here, because that's another thing, you know, the other employees that have been here for many, many years, that are, that are in there as well. So, yes, I definitely have it, we can sit down, please contact me, we'll go through the entire book.
Well, can we see it now?
Yeah, I mean, can everyone see it?
Sure. If you want to go get it.
I've got it ready to move.
You want, we can move on while she's doing that.
Okay.
Okay? The collective, police collective bargaining agreement, I wanna read this out real quick. Collective bargaining agreement, March nineteenth, twenty twelve was our initial meeting. Mayor attended that one. We've got the City of Florisville's collective bargaining team, consists of Mayor Daniel Tejada, City Manager Andy Johnson, my Director Fonda Kellner, Inner Administrative Services Director Sherry Colick. A briefing was held, and the collective bargaining team from the police department provided us with the following documents, with changes from the contract that are currently serving under, and we have a copy of that, it's a pretty big packet. Some of the changes are minor, some are more significant. We are, we as a team are currently reviewing the changes that are being put into this document, I'm compiling our slides. Please review this document, and please listen to this last portion for me. Please review this document, and any input would be appreciated. Please do not release this document as it is a working document, a contract, and none of the articles have been in any way approved by either party. We will be tentative in meeting on the following dates, March twenty-sixth, twenty twelve, nine AM City Hall, April second, twenty twelve, three AM, City Hall, April ninth, twenty twelve, three AM, City Hall. And these collective bargaining agreements were a voter initiative approved by the voter, so this is something that we're bound to meet. So, please review what you've got, if you have any questions, come visit with me. We've already discussed some of the deals, some of the deal breakers for Arning. My understanding is sixty days from the March nineteenth should be our completion of the collective bargaining agreement. If it's not, then we ask for an extension and move forward, and it could take some time, or if we agree on the numbers, then we'll be okay.
And I encourage the council, if they could attend some of these meetings, like we discussed last year's budget time, the collective bargaining is a mandate that was, like Andy mentioned, a mandate by the people, but it's an unfunded mandate, there's no source of revenue to fund the CPA, except your normal fees and taxes. So, I encourage you to attend some of these meetings.
What did we discuss the increase with you?
What did we say, seventy-five thousand?
We had figured about seventy-five thousand, and you look at that contract, it's a lot more than that.
And on the salaries as well, when I'm doing the salary update, knowing that the collective bargaining was coming up this year, I did do the salary surveys on police officers, lieutenant, and sergeants as well, so it's a pretty long.
Okay, and we'll move forward, and she can finish off the meeting. Annual audit scheduled for completion, email correspondence with Pat Wagner, who is the CPA and her firm. Ms. Fonda says, "Pat, can you please give us a timeline on the status of our twenty eleven, twenty twelve financial audit?" We do have a council meeting tonight, and we have had our council members ask when the documents were ready. If we could have a date as to when these may be ready, I would greatly appreciate it. You would like to give them an answer so we can continue to stay on the same page. This is an email correspondence, I've had phone conversations before with her to ask her that we need that completed. Says her response, "Hi Fonda, I am meeting with Tom that flew to go over the tip results and some work he has done on the debt service test." Tom is our contractual CPA that we have. "I expect that we will have taken care of the previous commitments we had scheduled for March, April, for the end of April, and will again turn our audit focus to the City of Florisville." We have meetings after meeting after meeting with the current contractual CPA that we've got, and outside auditors that have come in at the citizens' request. So, we are complying with everything that we have to, it's a tedious, tedious process, and we will have a conclusion and a report to the council, or she will, because it's her responsibility. She's received everything that we've got. And last but not least, on a good note, from a nation from San Antonio River Authority is... Are you here? She is awesome, my best friend so far. Email correspondence between Ms. Karen, OPL, and I with the San Antonio River Authority. She sent out a list stating that there were surplus items that the San Antonio River Authority would be advertising for sale. Please review the list. I sent her, she sent me this on Monday, February twenty-seventh, twenty twelve at three fifty-eight. On Tuesday, February twenty-eighth, twenty twelve at nine nineteen AM, I responded to the morning Karen. This is a follow-up email to our earlier phone call, please, earlier phone call, I had talked to her earlier. Please consider the City of Florisville, phone number two seven, two thousand three four, definitely, please, tell your department. In addition, as a hall of possible, item number two two five, two thousand three, for escape, for the permits to comply with CFM office, thank you in advance. And we move to the conclusion of our email correspondence I received from a Mary's...
Marie Pulsing.
Marie Pulsing. Mary's in CFM awarded, item number two two five, two thousand three, for escape. If you would like to come view this item, I am available Tuesday morning, and if you please let me know, this, if this will work. And we get there, I had looked at the list, the minimum bid, hoping it did with a thousand dollars. We went hoping we could get it for that price, we get there, and Karen said it's free. So, we got that vehicle, it's parked off by the, just as best as a vehicle, two thousand three, for escape. We did the cart factor, blue look value between fifty-five and seven thousand dollars, that vehicle park. And we got it for free, thank you, Karen.
Thank you, you're awesome.
So, all right, Ms. Sherry.
This is an example, and I'll give you a list of the employees that I've got on it. This is an example of what I did in looking through information on, if it was solicitor employees, what they made, and also pulled their data and what they were hired. I pulled the information out from the TMO website that had states our size between five thousand and ten thousand. Job descriptions that are similar to the ones that we kind of, and then a matrix I've highlighted ourselves. It's from the lowest pay scale to the highest pay scale, and it's very easy to see that a majority of our employees show up at the food shop. Again, it's not a huge difference in increase, and you're welcome just to look at it.
Absolutely.
And they're broke down, they actually do have hire dates and employee names on them, so you can look it up. It's reduced from like that. Also have the job descriptions on there. We do have a couple of them where they actually show towards the bottom, where their pay scale actually showed up to be in the mid to lower range, because I know there is a... So, we do have some of the employees that are showing up that are available, but we've got them where we can show that their positions in cities similar to ours, and for their tenure and that kind of thing, that the pay scale that we're looking at for them is reasonable to compare. I did pull employee files on some of the employees that have below pay scales to look at their evaluations and their performances in the past, to make sure that there wasn't any negative in the files, which kept them from getting merit increase raises, and I put that towards the information that I got as well. So, I've spent a lot of time on this, I've done a lot of work on it, to make sure that any of the decisions that I went to Andy with and said, "This is what I think we should do," I had the backup that went towards it, and then I was able to answer the questions that were on there.
Yeah, I think what we need to remember is one of the objectives of Andy's contract, as he reiterated at the beginning of his presentation.
This wasn't, and thank you very much, this wasn't something that I decided, that I came up with. This was a directive from the council, it sounded like, so I'm just trying to fulfill my contractual requirement.
Exactly.
But I'd like to, you know, you talk it over with, but we really need the individuals that we had on our... For the field work, in addition, you know, the council feels that this is not something they want me to honor, and I'll do that.
These numbers also included the merit increase raises that they received this year. I did head start at the project, and I kind of reiterated it when we got a few people. Once those were put in there, I put it back into the matrix to make sure that it did be shifted. And any of the numbers that I proposed would not put them out of, out of separation or put, separate them out in their section, when it goes through merit raises next year. The state receives some merit raises next year, it's not gonna put them well above where their job would possibly be.
They feel it's within that, within right level.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, one factor that we're not putting in is, what is the tax rate for these cities?
Mayor, I haven't pulled the tax rate for homeless cities, because I don't have that.
Okay, Elgert is thirty-two cents a hour.
I can pull this for you, definitely. One of the things that I looked at as well when I was preparing is to make sure that we could be within the budget that we're currently at, so that we wouldn't have to do a budget of increment for the second half of the year. We're, like I said, we're under, I was crunching the numbers today, to make sure that we would still be in that level, and Andy, you know...
What did you have, five hundred and four?
Five hundred and forty.
What did you have?
They're all broke down by individual people.
And you're not talking about big dollars?
No, no.
A few dollars, right?
Actually, we don't have anything over, everything is under a dollar, nothing, the highest one is less than, it's right, less than a dollar. One of the issues that we got is our beginning pay. Most of the, most of them that I'm looking at doing are, we're looking at less than fifty cents, right about fifty cents. It's not a huge increase as far as our budget, but it puts them in line where they fall in their department. Because again, that's something you have to look at, they may be basically out of range for what they're compared to other cities, but within their own department, they fall right in place. So, that's another thing that we looked at. And so, when I looked at the numbers today, I made sure that we weren't falling.
Where's Richmond Mills? That I found out?
That was Richmond, Richard's.
One of the, one of the things I'd like to point out, Mayor and Council, we are talking about the Eagle Ford shell area. We, during my contractual negotiations with the council, when I asked for my salary, the first thing that was brought up was, well, Pleasant doesn't make that. How are you gonna do that? Well, they had, they had, they're the city manager forever and a day. And she wrote the rankings to get to Richmond. They hired brand new to them, and they started them off, and this is public information, at ninety thousand dollars, with a guarantee that they're gonna move them up as quickly as possible, in comparison to the area where they're at. Our self-tax collections, our activity that we've got within our city, they have lost about seventeen and forty to oil and gas industry, we've been extremely fortunate too. We've lost some others to other areas, but this is not, and the issue that I'm bringing to you to say, well, we can compare to be like somebody else. This is something that you asked for, and brought up to you, we did a share, and as a figure that's very managed.
One of the other things is our starting pay is one of the lowest in our area. Plus, if it starts down forty dollars, it's ten dollars, that's their three-month, they get a twenty-five cent raise. If they're six-month, they get a twenty-five cent raise, and then at their anniversary, they're up for advancing it back one. We currently start our employees at one dollars an hour. I did not factor that into this project, what I'd like to do, because it could be a big budget adjustment, is look at it when we're going through the budgeting process for next year, and make that a stipulation to go into next year's budget. If we start hiring people that we hired, then it's a higher ten dollar an hour rate versus the nine dollar an hour. It is keeping us from getting some better employees, they can go just down the street and be hired for ten dollars an hour versus nine here, so.
Not that our employees are not good, they're awesome, so.
No, we have excellent employees, we need the new employees that we're hiring with the oil room right now, getting quality employees to hire at nine dollars an hour, we're looking at a smaller range.
If you may, just give me the information based on how much it would affect our budget, the total?
It wouldn't change your budget, it wouldn't change your budget.
I understand it's not gonna change the budget, I'm just asking as the total.
The cost, thirty thousand dollars.
And that would be for the entire year, which we're already halfway through the year, so it would be a ten and a half on the ship.
And that's an apartment.
Right. I think that the larger picture which we're missing out on is that we are in compliance with HR guidelines. That's the main thing that we were after. Lou, can you speak to that, because I know that was a issue.
Well, I think two things are at issue here. One is that you commanded the manager to do what he thought was, make the presentation. And number two, point out those areas where you need to make some adjustments so you remain competitive and so you've got quality employees. And so, I think just now, the question is, you know, is the council gonna say, "Finish the job for the manager," and I think he's asking for your guidance and correction in that respect. I think most of you have been out at the trade, not trade fairs, but job fairs. And you know which competitors are paying to drive the truck, to do things that you're asking your people to do. And there are some of the people pulling out thirty and forty dollars an hour, where you're offering nine. But I think you really need to keep with the people that you've got and keep them on board. And I think if they're consistent with HR policies, you're proper, and you're respectable.
You know, Reidy has the different worksheet that I have, what position can we actually talk about? What's that, Reidy working?
There, I've actually, what I've given you is just an example of what I've done to come up with my theory to show you that a double up these are actually the positions that I'm looking for.
Where's your breakdown, Sherry Colick, on the farm system and the...
That's it, yes, sir.
Yeah, it's got, I mean, it's...
Yeah, it's got all of the information broke down, it's got all of it looked into, and again, I've done extensive research on it. I pulled their employee files, I've sat down and talked to the ones that there was an issue in there. I've really done my diligence to make sure that the decisions that I make, if they come back to being, you know, if we have an employee that comes and says, "Well, I wanted to agree this because I feel like I should have gotten a raise," then I have all of my information to explain to that employee why at this point, he wasn't in the process. It doesn't keep him from getting his merit raise, or, you know, a separate evaluation, maybe moving to a different department, but at the current time, I can sit down and tell him, "This is why you were included in this group of people that gave us this raise."
I do believe there should be a baseline set, so if increasing the salary for a new hire is, it needs to be increased, I mean, so, now that we should do it, but, you know, just wanted to see the information before we vote for it.
And like I said, I've got it broke down for every employee, not just the ones that I'm looking at the increases for, but every employee in the city as well, including the... PD which will work with, um, the collective bargain, um, and I feel very confident with what I've come to be and design on, that I've done my diligence, and I can stand behind the suggestions that I've made.
So what you're saying is they're plugged into a grade level in their salary place.
Right, due to their, you know, the time they've been here, the jobs that they do, and the responsibilities in the job that they do, um, because we have people in the same, you know, the water and sewer department that are basically the same job level that have different responsibilities, and again, you have to take that into consideration.
And again, this is something that we asked in the, this is part of ending contracts, so I think my recommendation, and this is my opinion, is that they ought to continue and finish their job.
I, and, you know, human resources is something we wanted to work on, so we answered that.
And just to further that, Andy and I are scheduled for a class on April fourth and twenty-fifth, and we're going to go, uh, be briefed on all of the new HR laws, as well as an update of all the previous HR laws.
On San Antonio, so we ride that.
Yeah. Which is why we had to schedule it further behind, the rest of them were, we stood down, all finished when hitting San Antonio, so we waited to go to it to stay with our training.
Is that, do we, we got insurance on that vehicle? Do we have one part time?
Yes.
Martin, I think, I think the gas company.
And also on the new positions, since you comply with the three month or the six month wait, I mean, you're gonna go ahead and hire, right?
Yes, we would really, really, that's very much needed on the street, the wastewater, and then we.
On that, on that, when we're talking about the increase in salary, if we have to do that next year, in budget time, can you look forward on that and let us know what, I mean, if we do hire, do we crawl rate, the people who are coming in now, or do you hire them at that salary?
They're hired at the entry level of that grade, right?
Yes, okay.
And like I said, there's definitely some suggestions I'll have there in budget time that we can work into the budget for next year, um, to give us a little bit of room between now and then, uh, but these are immediate changes that I saw that should be done.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at increases of, you know, with the police department employees. And, I mean, everything's going up, and, I mean, we try to do things to increase money, and we're not going anywhere, so, I don't know, I don't know where we have any.
I know Sherry's worked on this since, um, last year.
I appreciate it.
On the research, and she's done a great job, and thank you so much, and so Andy now can check off one more thing on this.
One more day of survival.
Right. And if I could just get all of them back, if you'd like copies, I'll be happy to provide with you, but that way I keep my reports together. And if you, and if you guys, if you all want any further information, please feel free to come to the office and sit down with me, and I'll go through the whole process with you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mayor, can we just make sure that the council understands to yourself that good things are happening in Florida? We've had a lot of things coming in, and we're working with the economic development that corporation, and our P and Z, uh, to make sure that we grow properly, and, uh, you should, uh, be very proud of your, your people that makes the decision for us to do this. Thank you.
I know this councilman, uh, always concerned about money, but the money will come.
As Andy requested, he wants a formal council support, so, on the sound, so we have the, the council field.
I just wanted to see.
Isn't that a form of motion? Commander's playing counter election. I think we're according to the.
On that?
And we're still at, I don't know, I don't know.
Well, I'll read the motion. I move that we, um, continue with the presentation as stated, with the human resource department with budgeted positions, salary survey, and the, regarding, we did not secure.
That has not changed at all, we still have the interim, uh, positions in place, it's still that way, it's not, uh, an adopted, uh, organizational chart at this point in time. What I'd like to do is compile the information I got there, a goals and objective sheet to the day, and at next, uh, month's meeting, I'll, I'll bring that to you.
Okay, so the motion is only for the discussion of duty positions and the salary survey.
And the.
I second that.
To implement the question.
And to implement.
Yes, I second that.
Motion by Castillo, and second, my goal is to approve the budget positions and salary survey. Would you favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I, uh, ask for permission just to address item F for one item? Um, 'cause I know this is coming up next, next week on RV parks, RV parks, RV parks, RV parks. He's one of these RV parks, and I'd like the two gentlemen back here, they don't even do, probably gonna be master meters, which comes up every time they're discussing P and Z. One of the issues on these RV parks is when you put a master meter in, you have the capacity to support that master meter and then go out to all the locations. One of the things that the engineer recommended was the hydraulic studies, and I'd like to ask the engineers if they've thought through and can tell us, so we'll know for planning and building purposes, what we're looking at to do initial hydraulic mon, mon, hydraulic modeling, so that we have some idea of what costs we're looking at associated with these RV parks, and so we can consider whether or not our fee structure is adequate, as several council members have asked about, uh, what would it take to get the city hydraulic model quicker?
What we have to do is, we would need to look at, we would need to look at the existing records that the city has, uh, and see, uh, to what extent they are already in digital form, and then put them in digital form, and then we'd be able to enter them in along with billing data. Normally, we can, and on average, for cities the size of Florisville, we've been able to turn around hydraulic models, um, in as little as three or four months from start to finish.
Dollar wise?
Dollar wise, again, I would, I would hesitate to draw a number until I look at the data you have, because it can vary widely, but the council would like us to look at that and get a number to the city staff, uh, we can have that turned around by the end of next week.
Well, the reason I'm asking that, Mr. Mayor, is when P and Z does its analysis and says, we, we recommend, we automatically do what was discussed earlier, we have to go back up to Five Street and find out if we've got capacity, to the moment we grant permit and bust the PCQ standard, and we've got existing citizens who's gonna have downward flow on the pressure, and then we've got a cycle we start. And so out of all the things that was presented tonight of a master plan, to me, understanding the water pressure issue and the capacity issue as we grow, to me, is the most critical thing that is discussed. And it's not really an action item here, except that it relates to RV parks, and that's kind of where the rubber hits the tire, hits the road. Uh, so I'd like to ask the managers, the council, whatever, out of that report, to put the focus on that, because if we bring in a hundred men, a hundred RV parks units here, and they're in the wrong location for water, remember when we did Live Oak, Aloma, the one thing we looked at was the water and the wastewater, certainly those units, because that's a critical component, we would get ourselves in trouble on. So, you know, I'd like to say amen to what they said, but we need to bring that back to the council, to the manager first, and then the council, so we can act on it.
We will get around that.
Get around that.
Any of the business council, any of the questions? Comments from the audience? Means adjourned at night, yeah.